Doing it wrong.
Okay, well, here we are with our committee of the whole work session. So the first item on our agenda, and we have Kristen, the highway engineer, here, and we have her support team, Lisa, to talk about the subordinate governmental service districts. And thank you for providing that. I'm sure we all are aware of something that is a part of the operation of the maintenance policy, but this gives us a better idea of how that actually works. So I'm going to turn that over to Kristen right now.
Thank you for my call. Good morning, everyone. Accountant Lisa Sorley and I are here today to review the county's subordinate governmental service districts policy, the common acronym for that being SGSD, which I'll use from here on. With a couple of hearings scheduled for next month, and looking at this policy being last reviewed in 2011, it seems to be a good time to familiarize the commissioners and other members of the public with current practices with respect to SGSDs. Our second objective for today is to seek direction on some next steps. Are we ready to consider adoption of the policy? Or does the board request staff to answer any questions before we recommend adoption of the policy? The policy largely reflects current practices, and I will talk about the one new item, which is the SGSD brushing provisions, which is a Firewise recommendation. Other than that, the policy before you reflects how we have been doing business for a number of years. We'll start with the background of SGSDs. It's Minnesota statute, chapter 375B, that authorizes counties to establish SGSDs, and SGSDs have been utilized here in Cook County since the early 1990s to provide summer and/or winter road maintenance services. And these are along roads which aren't under the county's jurisdiction, some of them being forest service routes, others being routes that would be privately maintained if it weren't for an SGSD. An SGSD can be created by the county board or by petition. Here, we've established SGSDs following a petition and public hearing with the obvious reason that we would like to gauge public support for an SGSD. After the public hearing, the county board must approve or disapprove the establishment of the requested district within 30 days. If anyone's interested in more details of the statute, just let us know and we can get that to you. Once the SGSD is established, the policy before you requires that the district elect a road liaison who works with the highway department to set service standards and answer questions. Now, it does not specify how that road liaison is to be elected, but the road liaison must serve for a minimum of two years. That reduces the department's administrative time in repeating information or training in new liaisons with each change of season. The liaison also communicates within the district as well, which further reduces the department's administrative time. Instead of having to answer questions from all residents of an SGSD and balance what is sometimes varying opinions, we go to the road liaison who communicates with his or her community. The highway department seeks bids twice a year on behalf of each SGSD. SGSDs can again seek winter maintenance services or summer maintenance services or both. There hasn't been an example yet where the county has not received any bids, however, it's not unusual to receive only one bidder. The highway department forecasts the anticipated costs for the county auditor's office, who is the responsible authority for levying the taxes within the boundary of each SGSD. And we base that on historical data for a given SGSD or for other SGSDs if it's a new one. And that division of responsibilities is important, we feel. It minimizes the chance of any conflict of interest. That said, the taxes may be divided up a few different ways when an SGSD is established, and Brady, feel free to add any comments if you would like, but they may be divided up equally per lot or per property owner, or proportionally based upon frontage, taxable market value, or lot area. So there are a few different ways those costs can be shared within the boundaries of an SGSD. And we should seek feedback on how taxes should be levied as part of that public hearing process because we set that as well as the boundaries of an SGSD when we put one into place. There are financing provisions under the current policy. If a road needs upgrading, for example, before it can be maintained by a contractor, there are provisions of how those costs would be financed by the county. And there's also a termination clause of how an SGSD would be terminated. That is a quick summary of the existing policy. Again, it's how we've been administering these SGSDs for several years. Prior to implementation of these practices, some of the SGSDs or all of the SGSDs were in the red. And with the changes made by this policy, we've been able to keep each neighborhood in the black. That's important to know as well. The one new item in the current policy are some brushing provisions. This is a request that came through the Public Safety and Transportation Committee from our Firewise coordinator. Oftentimes, when an SGSD is established, the road liaison might ask us, what would it take to upgrade a road? Or how much will it cost? How wide does it need to be? And we don't have recommended standards right now for any given road because we aren't the road authority for them. Again, some of them are forest service routes, so how wide they are or how much gravel they need to put down really varies a lot. We don't have one set standard for that. What Firewise has said is the one thing that can make a big difference for a community in emergency services access are the vegetation provisions in here. So that's if we can make one difference or one recommendation for our neighborhood to consider, the most important recommendation for Firewise is vegetation standards, the height and the width, for example, if a fire truck or an ambulance needs to get to a property. Again, that's the only new item in the policy. We'd be glad to go into this in any more detail, or we're happy to take questions from the board or members of the public.
Questions, comments, additions?
I, looking at the reimbursement services. That was one of the things that Brady, you're suggesting we think about after our last meeting and coming into this one, and just looking at the administrative fee and those financing charges. Is that, Kristen, kind of what you're talking about, keeping things in the black, is using those numbers versus before things from there?
Yes, when these fees were not in place, most of the SGSDs operated in the red. And one of the biggest impacts of operating in the red is if something happens, there aren't any dollars in the fund to address it. If there's a particularly bad winter, for example, and they need to plow more than normal, or if a culvert fails after a rainstorm, if they're in the red, there aren't any funds to address those types of happenings.
And under financing charges? So in the policy, which you brought, just said, the county can advance funds for services. The interest rate is fairly substantial. In this case, it says never less than 5%. 2% over the current bond rate, but never less than 5%. So the thing I asked you to think about was, given the question, the current one, that made you very large, just if you want to think about if you want to have any limits or not. This doesn't imply any limits, so, and that may be fine. You may want to just do what's currently out there and think about limits later, or...
Limits on the amount advanced?
On the whole, on the whole amount, let's say, I mean, you could look at it really broadly and say, all the things that we own money for. We've got about 580,000 outstanding fire departments. That's fire buildings or trucks, et cetera. We're not impacted, and we're largely leveraged on that. If you fold all some interest, you have enough cash flow, it's not a problem at this point. So it's just kind of looking at what we're on limits. We've also got 175 off the EDA, and we have some various, very small, various county loans. So we probably have, you know, 800,000 county money out in various loans like that. We have other loans like the bonding loan fund, but that's a separate, like, state money interest plan, so it's not a county money. And we have, so, we have, and then we have big loans through our bonding, so if you look at our I, it's the big numbers, but that's the, maybe, the golf course is supposed to be its back in some time. It's a rebounded for 10. So probably 800 is, it's outstanding. So, it's kind of forecasting in the future, how many of these, how large will they be? I don't have a good sense of that. That's maybe the biggest one that ever comes before us. And most of our loans, if you're looking historically, they're not four of these. EDA is, we've had the interest rates as high as 6% for EDA, some of the home surveys were 5%, 4%. And then our fire departments, you may think of it in a different category, even at 1%.
And what does that, what do we do with that interest when we collect it? Does that cover staffing, or...?
It's just the cost of money, basically. Which is why we charge very little, nothing for fire department loans under 100,000 loans and 1%. It's all without, that would be a loan for a captain.
So that question would be, does it make a difference on the initial fee if it's a year around versus just a request, let's say, for summer? Is there any difference in that? Initial fee will be $1,200, but is that for...
30.
Yeah, what would that be for?
Yes, if a SGSD chooses either winter maintenance or summer maintenance, that fee is reduced to $450 from year to year. Ordinarily, the annual fee is a minimum of $600. The initial fee doesn't currently change, but it could. I don't know that there would be that much of a difference in how we set up an SGSD. Certainly, there's a little bit less administrative time from year to year if we're only working with a neighborhood in one season or the other, but I don't know that the setup would be all that different.
And how is it decided, the charges? How are the charges decided per lot? Or how does all that work? Who makes that decision? How it's assessed? Let's say, we have some folks here who have, you know, 28 pieces of land some live on, some don't, of that 18 have requested to be considered for subordinate. How do you decide all that?
The taxpayers have to make that decision because this is their SGSD, and they work with Brady.
You'll, you'll make that decision.
Yes.
But in the past, you've looked to them for...
Yes.
What is acceptable to them because it really doesn't impact us as to how it breaks out or what's going to impact. It's very important to them.
Right.
So they make that recommendation. They look at some of the various methods. This camp, 20, they look at value, and they look at acreage, or is it 2, they look at. And I think they've, I think they've come to a decision with three people that are most interested in it, and then they send out a notice to see what interests. And they've made that somewhat clear in their first petition letter, but we'll send out another notice to try and make that more clear and get people's opinions.
It sounds like a great opportunity to, for Rancho Spurton.
Would anyone from the group like to address anything?
Well, Judy, to your question, we did discuss, you know, how this would be split up, and it's such a big concept. And, you know, there's probably 100 homeowners out there, and if you thought about, you know, a big number, call it $300,000, you split it up, well, you have 93,000 dollars apiece. Well, you know, we, you know, just really came to the viewpoint that those that have more out there should pay more. So our view is market value.
I have had some thoughts about that since then. You know, we have talked, we, my neighbors and I have talked about the possibility, and obviously, some are positively for this and others are not, but bottom line, no matter whether you have 400 acres out there, or four acres, or four tenths, you are still going to be using the road. So maybe it should really be divided up by parcels of property. Therefore, regardless of how much land you have, you still use the road. So I'm beginning to think that parcels of land might be a better approach.
Well, you know, there isn't any disagreement among us, you know, about the fact that everybody has the benefit once the road is basically moving past home, you know, so, you know, we're not saying, you know, some shouldn't pay and others should. We, we did look at it on the basis of area, which is, I guess, yeah, acreage, and, you know, that's, again, I guess my basic premise is that those out there with more should pay more, whether it's market value, whether it's area, you know. We did look at it on the basis of frontage on Camp 20 because we didn't have a method of measuring that, that we had a way of looking at it. But it's, I, if I was sitting in the audience and I had 40 acres out there and my passes were $300, and the proposal was to spend $300,000 to upgrade this road, and you were saying to me, now you have $300, $3,000, you know, that would be a hard bill as well. So, you know, I just think that it's, I, it's common sense, but, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's just a, I, I think this is a perfect example of those that have, you know, the most out in that area, not even to finance, split it up, maybe area, maybe market value, maybe whatever, should pay more than those that have less, and again, make it whatever definition you want.
Anything else from anybody?
Well, I think it has to be one of the other, either acreage or market value. The frontage doesn't make any sense to me because, personally, I don't have any frontage on Camp 20, so...
Neither do I.
The reason, again, that that one did not appeal at all to me is because multiple assumptions would have to be made. So, you know, all of the people that are not on Camp 20, so how do you split that up? It becomes arbitrary decisions, that most of this can be done without somebody saying, oh, this should be this, or this should be that, using county data, whether it's assessed value, or acreage, or whatever, whatever it is, they might be...
And just to put it in context, we could approve a district and not talk about any of this yet, and then that happens down the road.
It's part of the public hearing, isn't it?
It doesn't have, financing can come later.
Okay.
It's just you're approving it to do these services, so that could be approved. We've typically done it all in one shot. But I'm just saying that in context, this doesn't have to be decided now, but they want to know this in some aspect of this. Number one, would the county, I think, for sending out a notice to let people know, would the county be willing to finance, let's say, $300,000 or $350,000? So that's why I brought up the context of, would the county do that rather than, they paying for that in one shot? 3,000 apiece, or one pays 20, and one pays 500, and so forth? Would we finance it for a period of time?
So are you saying that should be part of our definition in our policy?
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be. I mean, it's in there now. It says we will.
Yep.
But we've never looked at anything that's large, so they're really interested in. The board could say, no, we don't want to finance anything that large.
Right.
In order to get people to come to the meeting and have an idea of what they're looking at, that's something they would like to know. And whether the county would, would consider. Financing means we would put the money upfront, the 300, the 350, we would start assessing that and collect, collect the money back over five or seven or 10 years or some period of time, at some interest rate.
Bobby had his hand up. Just a minute, and that would go on their tax bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Just as, the only difference between these and most of the others is that the others, they would come in November and say, we need $5,000 for this new district. We would collect it on their taxes and then spend the money that we just collected. In this case, we did spend the money upfront, 300, or whatever, and then collect it back over five or seven or 10.
Along with potentially their annual maintenance costs, which would be assessed as well.
That's the question.
A lot of stuff happens with numbers, you know, they're paying $350,000 back plus an additional fee, so some of these people still could be quite the buyer.
And the fact that we don't have a lot of applicants in the past who would do the work, evidently, maybe one, I mean, you don't know how many people would apply to do the gravel in the summer, do the plowing in the winter, we don't know that yet. Maybe there'd be more plowers than there would be people in the summer to maintain.
I believe you're only looking for one season of maintenance, correct?
Yes.
Just summer?
Mm-hmm.
In this instance, so, Kristen?
I wanted to point out that under the current policy, it does say that any special service is assessed over a period of no more than five years. Following up on what Brady had to say, I would encourage the board to think about that. If five years is the right number, or should it be seven, or 10, or another number? Or should it vary, and maybe that's set at the time an SGSD is approved?
So that's flexible, that period of time?
It, it can be if we write the policy differently before we consider adopting the policy.
There's a basic special assessment statute that the limit is three years, so you can set it within that.
Yeah, having read this, and I think that it's good to have some options, which, you know, just looking at different scenarios, like per owner versus lot area, or to say, acreage or market value, you may have situations where you have someone that has 90% of the property for access, and you've got two other, you know, three others that own just, you know, very little. And so I, I think it's really good to have various options for this because you're going to have circumstances. So I really commend you for including, I think, all the options possible in these situations. In regards to a limit, I don't, I think if we start doing that, unless we have good reason, you're being somewhat discriminatory. Because there could be a big project coming in and a very small project, and there are going to be costs, you know, related, I think, to the size of the project. And then considering the three variables with summer, you know, winter, plus repair, I, I really support what you've done with that. As far as a limitation, I think that, again, can be highly influenced by the circumstances of the application, you know, why they need it and do it. And so I think from a policy perspective, I, I think we should be less restrictive rather than more restrictive, as far as that timeframe, up to 30 or 10, or whatever. But I think that would be, that could be on each case specific to the circumstances of that situation.
Brady, do you remember why the five years was put in there? Was that a way to kind of cap the maximum amount that could be funded?
The length of the assessment? I, I don't even know where this, I'm assuming it came from another...
Kristen's predecessor worked on establishing these practices, and at that time, most of the requests that had come in were for routine maintenance where they had not been budgeted. And so we had a couple of SGSDs eight years ago or so that were in the, in the red, you know, $8,000 to $10,000. And so this was set up more to deal with that because that was primarily what people were, were addressing at that time. We had not had a request for a major road improvement, and, and now we do, so...
I think that's going to be a big conversation, but just kind of point of order, the conversation is about the policy right now.
Yeah, like I say, it doesn't, it's not affecting our cash flow at this time, but it's thinking about the future.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I kind of like the five year because, you know, if you've got 100 residents, they might be able to float a $300,000 loan in five years. I mean, that kind of covers the county's rear end on it.
Could it be, could it be a factor of the impact as far as, like, could the length of the term be a function of the size of the project? That could get tricky policy-wise, but what we might need to be tricky?
The, the reason that we want to have a good solid basis for a policy is that we want to provide options for people to develop the property that they own in Cook County without necessarily expanding the commitment of the highway department to maintain, to increase and maintain more roads than we currently do. So this is, this is the county's way of helping property owners share expenses to access properties that are not accessible via just county roads or other, other maintained roads. Every case is determined individually, but within the parameters of the policy that you set. So set the target as wide or as narrow as you, as you need them to be in anticipation of that, and of course, policies can be adopted or can be adjusted. And future needs change, but the, but the reason behind this and the reason to have this is we currently have several current requests, and we want to make sure that we have a consistent way of handling these based on the statutory authority and regulations that we have to meet those. One of the, one of the reasons why you would, you know, why would you consider financing an improvement for longer than five years is if you anticipate that that improvement would have a lifespan, life expectancy of more than five years. You never really own, finance an improvement for longer than the life expectancy of your property, you know, you don't, you don't, you finance a car over five or six years, but you don't finance it over 20. So there's, the length of financing is kind of a combination of a couple different things, the capacity, the cost, the expected service life of that improvement. There are reasons where you could say five years is, is limited, but there are also reasons why, to this point, the requests that we've had all fit within that timeframe, which is why I think the illustrations that... that timeframe, which is why I think the illustrations that Brady provided, but the other instances where the county has financed projects or improvements for fire halls and other improvements within the home for some public good, but not necessarily county responsibility and a lot of such.
So what happens after the five years? They have a good road up until five years, and then what happens? Do they reapply, or how does that look?
Well, the assumption is that they would continue, they'd do the work probably in one year, and then they would start bringing the maintenance immediately.
All, all of our SGSDs but one currently have summer maintenance. And depending on the size, the length of the road, the number of taxpayers, they have some blading, some will have brushing, or several have annual gravel applications in small sections. And so we budget for that so that every year they can put down a little bit more gravel on a section of their roadway. So that's an ongoing effort. The situation with this particular road is that it's not capable of being maintained unless they do a major construction, so that they could look at these annual small gravel and gratings.
I don't know, this is, this is given probably out beyond what anybody knows, but presumption would be if you put three hundred and fifty thousand in the road, it would have a longer lifespan, more than five years. If you did seventy thousand, then you probably, it may not.
Or you're only going to do a small section versus the entire length. Those are decisions that would have to be made by that group as they approach the board.
Series three fifty, you might, you might say ten years.
And I'm comfortable with the policy being at ten years. Any longer than that makes me a little nervous.
Okay. Because of the length of the...
The length of the road, and how fast does property sell in here, and things change, and who's in charge, and the person in charge, and there's all sorts of factors involved.
The life of the road.
Life of the road. Life of the road. People that live on the road. And putting that out. How, our Septic Lawn Program, how long are those usually? Those go longer, don't they?
I think they're, I don't remember. They're at least ten. There's a lot of precedent for ten.
Yeah, and that's kind of where it's from on the ten.
Our tax forfeit, you know, financing is ten years.
Yeah.
And it doesn't mean you have to do ten years. It's just that that might allow...
Yeah.
It makes more sense to me, the longer.
The ten year?
Just to give you a, if it was three hundred and fifty, maybe it's ransom, amortizations. Three hundred and fifty thousand at five percent interest, for five years, eighty thousand a year is the payment. For ten years, forty-five thousand a year is the payment. And that's spread out over about a hundred people. Just for example. So if you three percent drops it to seventy-six thousand versus eighty, or forty-one thousand versus forty-five.
Thanks for being a mind reader and assuming what we were going to talk about.
So that's eight thousand versus forty-five hundred per property owner, per year. Is that right?
Well, eighty thousand, you'd buy that by a hundred, so that would be...
Oh, I'm sorry, eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Okay, thank you. That was a quick no, thank you.
And that was at five percent, you said?
Yeah, that's at five percent.
Is that a good number that we can count on?
Well, it shouldn't be any less than that.
Yeah, according to the current policy. Current policy is no less than five.
Well, I'll show it to you.
In addition to your...
And then they, yeah, and then presumably after it's fixed, then they'd be, we'd start collecting money that, let's say the work was done next summer, and then in November, we'd be figuring out a bill for maintenance for the next year, and then that would be on their bill also.
Okay.
At ten years, that's still a pretty significant impact on a property owner annually, so, I mean, what, what can we say a life of a road is, a gravel road?
Depends on its usage.
Sure, but...
And the level of maintenance on it, and, I mean, we're safe at ten years.
And how bad was it to begin?
Can it go longer, is what I'm asking.
I'm not comfortable going longer. And I know subordinate service districts in my area have had impact changes that they've had to adjust for, where the taxes went up significantly for services. I think I've got one road that has some culvert issues every year.
So can, can you talk more about that? Like, you're not comfortable going longer because...
Of the payback and it getting paid back, and the county being covered, and the obligation of the county, and the county sitting on the debt for a longer period of time.
And you know our rolling sources, or some of them are in question now, the fact that a hundred thousand or a million doesn't impact this, today doesn't have a lot of impact as ten years.
We're looking at getting reduced income from the law?
So you're saying the intent is to sort of restrict, if we have ten years, we would restrict...
The burden on the county.
But we're still going to collect interest on that, more interest, the longer it is. And I'm not advocating for anything, you know, magical yearly amount, I just think, I think it's somewhat circumstantial. Some might be five, some might be ten, some might be fifteen, and then they average up.
The question is, how much of the general county taxpayer dollars do we make available to finance projects for specific...
So should we select an amount? I don't know if the year does that.
It kind of does.
I would say if we're really concerned about it, let's say, but then it becomes somewhat discriminatory, and I, so, you know, it's just worthwhile discussion. But if our, then it's worthwhile doing if we're going to, know we're going to run into trouble because there's too great of a need, but then are we here to provide, you know, help provide need? It's got some economic benefit to us because you're going to improve property values. Maybe that's not what we're about, but we do that in other means, but I just, I, I'm not opposed to ten, but I, I think sometimes there's circumstances where if we're really concerned about how much this could be, then let's say we won't go up more than a million dollars or something.
And we can change this policy at any time if a circumstance arises. It's just that we have this addendum that we're adding, and while we're adding it, let's also take a look at our other language at the same time.
Well, I keep saying, I just tried to do it right the first time.
I, so, so to make sure I'm understanding you, you don't want to do it longer than ten because it's kind of putting, the county is kind of being put out further, a little bit more liable. And I think what, I, what you're saying is we might need the flexibility to do it longer depending on the project. And, and that's what I was exploring, not saying one way or another, that for a larger project like this sounds like it has a pretty significant impact to amortize it over ten years on each property owner. And so I was trying to feel out or figure out, you know, the cost benefit county versus landowners to have it longer than ten, just because of the significance of that, that amount.
What's the difference between ten and fifteen? Is there much significant difference?
I didn't look at that, but...
Mind reader, nothing, Brady.
But, yeah, I think it would be fairly significant. I mean, if you just look at the difference between five and ten was eighty thousand versus forty-five. So you'd take a similar drop, you'd go to fifteen.
Okay. So four hundred and fifty a year at ten years, roughly for each homeowner?
I suppose at eight hundred, so maybe that's fourteen.
So thirty-seven fifty a month, plus their annual assessment that will be added on. And I think that I've had subordinate service districts that had more of an impact than that.
But that doesn't...
Where in the red?
But, yeah, I was going to say, and that doesn't make it any, you know...
No, it doesn't, but I mean, I'm just saying, it's happened and it's been done, and unfortunately you're not.
I would also keep in mind, that would be if it's split per parcel or per lot.
Which we haven't decided yet.
And some of the existing SGSDs are split based on taxable market value, meaning some property owners will see a greater impact than what we're estimating.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions?
I have a question.
Yes?
Someone on the board made a comment about the Cook County benefiting because the market value impact, rise of market value. Is there any kind of an estimate that you could give us that says, yeah, if the road is fixed, your market value is going to go up five percent, ten percent, twenty percent? That's another big deal to the landowners. They don't, they don't want their taxes going up. They're already going up on the road, you know, if, if this is approved and implemented. But then they're going to take a double wing because their market value is higher now, and they're going to have to send more money to Cook County. You have to understand the mindset of some of the people up in this area. They're, this is off-grid country. We don't have electricity, we don't have cellphone service, we don't have any service, any service is really. And a lot of people like it that way. They're, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying, but anti-government might be a good way to put it. So this is another, you know, piece with this annual assessment, the administrative fees, the financing charges, in addition to their raised taxes and their higher property taxes, going to factor into a final decision. So do you have any kind of an estimate as to how much?
That doesn't really pertain to the policy, and that's, I mean, none of us are assessors. I, I mean, I know that it was said, but...
I made that comment, and, and there are maybe situations where it would, and some situations where it wouldn't. And I think as far as market value, that's driven over a period of time, so more than likely, property is going to increase over, let's say, ten years in value if more and more people pay more for that, that, you know, and those are separate issues. But that's, but there are logical things that might happen, and one is, if you improve your property, more than likely, the value will go up over time, but it's only going to be comparative to that, you know, area.
And I think your, your best shot at getting an answer to that is to walk over to the assessor's office.
Because that, that's who sets the market value.
You know, just a comment, and maybe Molly might weigh in on this also, but the assessor would have no justification for changing an assessed value on a property just because the road is, is a different composition. But if there's a sale on that road the next year, you know, with the, you know, the adjacent properties, then he would have a justification for doing that. So just the presence of the road changing shouldn't, but maybe there will be activity out there, which will in fact change the whole situation, and then you'd see it on the assessor. But the assessor isn't, you know, picking out anybody in particular because the road is, is there saying, you know, okay, the road is here, so, yeah.
No, that's for the math. He's, they're going to give you the idea of what the impact might be eventually.
I think you're going to see a lot more traffic out down the back home road too, by people that, just the public in general, who live there.
Which some people won't like that, so your value will go down.
That wasn't our argument when I said here. We don't want people coming out there. And if it's a private road, is there any reason we can't put up a gate or a sign?
Is this a private road? Is this a forest road? Is this a DNR road? I've gotten, I've gotten several different answers, and they're all, so what kind of road is this?
You know, again, we're working on the policy, you guys are asking questions that I, I wish we could answer for you, but...
Again, I, I think the assessor would be able to confirm that, maybe planning itself also, but the, the history of this goes back to when it was solid and paper. And the, yet, yet the answer, in my view, is that it's a private road, and all ownership goes to the center line, and there are easements through everyone's property, you know, ongoing up the road for the rest of the year, so.
And that's one answer I never did.
So Kristen, what do you need from us on this? Well, based on the discussion that we've heard today, I guess the question would be, do we bring this forward at next week's meeting, or do we take some time to answer these questions and bring it forward in the first meeting in August? In either case, my recommendation would be that the board consider adopting the policy before establishing new SGSDs. We want to know that we're operating in accordance with the board's wishes for how these districts are administered. So I think that's the question, and I don't know if Molly wants to weigh in. I know her and I had a discussion about SGSDs last week, if she has any thoughts she wanted to add this morning.
We're, I, I think Kristen is, I think along the same lines as Kristen about this policy, that it's good to have something in place with kind of the rules of how the SGSDs are managed prior to establishing the new SGSDs, both so that we have an expectation of the service level that's required and the resources that the county will expend, and so that the property owners have the realistic expectations of what they're getting through the SGSDs. So I think, you know, Kristen and I met last week about this policy, we talked about different areas to address that kind of, help sort through issues that have popped up over the years. We're looking for your input as commissioners, since you will be the authority to pass the policy.
If we wait till the August meeting, will that impact any approvals of subordinate service districts?
My understanding is the two hearings are scheduled for August, so I don't believe so. I think the big question to answer is whether or not there is a cap to how much money might be loaned, either for a single SGSD or the program as a whole, to minimize the county's financial risk. And also, what is the time period over which an assessment might be spread out, or should there be a time period? I think those are the two big questions that need to be answered before we're ready to move forward.
One thing that might help with the cap question is just to see how much potential there is for new SGSDs out there. Is that a possible thing to look at, huh? No? No way, just based on private land with...
I mean, it just depends on the ownership. I've got one in process in my district, and then I got a phone call about another group that's interested, but otherwise, in seven years, I've never had anyone in my district asking for subordinate service district, and now I've got two.
So there have been two new ones established since I started ten years ago, and now we have two just this year that have gotten to the public hearing stage. So I think we're going to see that trend continue, but that's probably all we can say.
But you know what I mean about like, our, our private land is quite limited, and so I would assume the SGSDs is, no? But you know what I mean about like, our, our private land is quite limited and so I would assume the SGSDs is, no?
I, I don't. Twenty-six hundred miles of forest service roads that don't have any organized service on them.
Right.
You can look at it on the other end of the spectrum-
Sure.
That there could be a need for coordinated efforts on any one of those.
I see.
And every time-
Regardless of private land or not?
It, it's, it's access to private land. Do they have to, do they have to use a forest service road to get to it? Are they using, are they creating their own road? Anytime more than three properties are accessed by a single driveway, then that driveway becomes a road. And, you know, this, this question about how easements are granted and whether they're granted, yes, to look back to the deed, you have to learn the language. But typically, when those easements are granted, they're granted for a specific purpose, but they're also, you know, so they're typically granted for public use. So this whole conversation about deeds and private is heavily leading into that. And that typically, the precedent that things are, are the way things are done in Minnesota. An easement usually is granted for access to private property. But that easement is granted such that it's not too restricted that it becomes for, to, to some extent. So there's, I think, the potential for the need for property owners, it depends. It depends on how much.
That's been a discussion of another road in my district about when the easement was granted. They are questioning if that meant that their easement was granted to the public and we validated that, yes, it is.
In most, in most cases, when roads are private, a lot of my easements are granted, they are granted.
And that's when it happened.
And they're open.
So you guys might have your easements, if you look at what's reported, you might also see.
So can we decide your questions when it's on the agenda or do you wanna know that before you leave here today?
We'd be glad to bring forward a few options. I don't know if we'll be able to do that next week, but if not, then the first meeting in August.
Because we don't make decisions during this meeting.
And if we're first on the agenda, it could happen before the public hears.
What, what might be good is if Commissioner has a group can let Kristen and I know what your primary concerns are with this policy and your primary questions, that we can come back and present you our answers or options related to those concerns. And, you know, come work in the draft of the policy that addresses what we discussed today.
A big thing in this is Appendix A. We'll have to go over that, with your support for Appendix A.
I can just speak to that. To me, that's very important. Really not an alternative in my mind. If we're gonna start facilitating or supporting these projects, then it has to have probably safety component in that step, I mean, public safety.
I think that is true and we also need to look at financial impacts of that component, because I think that's a significant, it'll have a significant impact financially. Maintenance wise, brushing, no?
Well, fire wise helps out with brushing, brushing in the maintenance, but not brushing and not maintaining the shoulders has an impact on the road.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Besides the fire department.
Okay. So I think we will, unless there's other questions or comments, we will move on to having something put together by August.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
And thank you folks back here too. Next item on our agenda is to look at some contracts. Jeff provided some handles on that. We have a chance to probably review them ourselves from our last meeting, when we had a meeting with the three different entities. So little bit of an outline here that, that Jeff can comment on why we're here and concerns, meeting tasks and all that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What was included in the materials for the meeting was a summary of our meeting with the Grand Canyon City Council and just a summary of the discussion that we had related to the city contract contracts. And I think we agreed that the, the contracts were not necessarily current because of the date, because of the service levels defined, because of the costs that were involved. And that there's language that is not current and that there's probably a lack of public understanding of the purpose of such agreements. At that meeting, we decided on at that meeting, we decided on a list of agreements that were of primary concern, even though there are dozens of contracts between the city and the county that include cost share portion. And they were the community center, YMCA, truck cars agreement, law enforcement agreement, and the street maintenance agreement. Service goals identified at that meeting were unmet public needs, resource allocation and capacity, mission and values of the organizations. And, and recognize what strengths or what capacities the city, city staff and the, or county staff have to meet these goals. Financial goals, we identified stability, sustainability and equity as the things that we wanted to address. And the next steps, and I think the conversation that we should have, probably try to tie up today, are this board's beliefs about the service level and expectation of each of these three contracts. I don't think that we're at the point of diving in and looking at negotiating dollars now because we're not sitting down with the, with the city council on each one of these. But I think that both myself and Brady and Molly, I'll have a pretty good working understanding of the history of these three contracts. Kristen, as I said, will stay so she can represent any questions that might come up related to the highway contract. They're all relatively, the, the law enforcement one and the highway one are old. They're thirty, forty years old. But just pushing money around from one source of taxpayer funds or another source of taxpayer funds without understanding why we're doing it and more how it benefits a specific population over a general population, I think is premature. So I'm, I'm not sure where you wanna, where you wanna take that conversation.
Well, since Kristen is here, let's look at the highway. Lot has changed since nineteen seventy-nine perhaps.
And, and again, Madam Chair, if you wanna jump right into the wording in the contracts, I think we can certainly do that. I don't think we're at that point. I think we're still trying to identify what is, what is an agreement between the city and the county look like on the maintenance of the, of the roads within the city of Grand Canyon.
Then we have to, then we have to look at what had been proposed somewhere.
Yeah, if, I think it would be helpful for me at least that we explore, you know, our highway department, looking at this as well as Molly and Jeff and then submit what you think is in our best interest. Is that possible? So we can have some kind, something to work with because obviously this is not even worth, really talking about. I, I don't think so because it's just, I don't know if it's relevant or not and what has been the practice, what has worked with the practice that we, or lack of practice we have. And, you know, what, what these entities, law enforcement especially, and, you know, highway department.
Well, I think, Commissioner, I think staff can represent to you what has been done and what current practice has been and how that's, and the mechanism for how that's been tracked and how that's been adjusted. But strategically, what are you trying to accomplish?
Okay.
That is the board's responsibility. You do my direction on how you want us to interact with the, with our partner, the city, in arranging these contracts. Kristen, I don't know if you could summarize briefly the services that we're providing underneath the current contract, what they look like?
Can everybody hear me because I don't come back out there? So Commissioner Berchheim's question, the agreement before you does not represent what we're currently doing. I don't know if that was followed for a period of one or two years and at some point abandoned. But for a long period of time, we have not been conducting services in the way that agreement sets forth. So to Jeff's point, I think before diving into the details of the agreement, I wouldn't spend too much time studying how it currently works because that doesn't represent what we're currently doing. That's just all we have in writing. As far as what we could be doing moving forward, I think what I can do is write down a first draft of what we are doing. That would be the easiest. The city takes care of some streets, the county takes care of some streets, some services. The city has equipment to deliver and the county doesn't. So we made it work for much longer than what I've been here. I know one of the charges coming out of the last point meeting was to talk with staff and I still have yet to do that. But that would be our starting point for documenting what we're currently doing. As far as what we could be doing strategically, in some cases, the county takes care of county roads only and the city takes care of city streets only. In other localities, the city takes care of all county roads and they're given a payment from year to year to do that. And, or vice versa, the county takes care of all roads in the, in the city and maybe receives a stipend from the city. Those are some of the options that I'm familiar with, but I think what, what's, speaking within Grand Canyon specifically, what services do we want to provide to the residents of Grand Canyon? What do we want that level of service to be? Is it what it currently is? In which case, we document what we're currently doing as a first step? Or are there things that commissioners have heard or that you would like to see woven into our consideration for updating the agreement?
Okay, well, I think we need to know what's going on now.
Yeah, and I haven't heard, I, I, I think that's a really smart way is to talk to staff and see how things are being conducted, record that, documented. I haven't heard a whole lot of complaints about, aside from Fourth Avenue West. About, about any, any aspect of that, you know, how things are going. So I think as far as this update is concerned, I think it's just good to be legit and have things on record and updated. I don't see any major changes that we, we need there.
Do we wanna address Fourth Avenue West in our-
Explicitly, explicitly. Well, I think, I, I don't know that it's, I mean, how is the, how, how do you, how might you see the agreement going forward? Explicitly defining every road, whether it be up or better?
I think, I think that establishing responsibility and authority is gonna be part of this in the cases where we're not sure and in the cases where authority and responsibility don't match our expectations and the current practices. I think there are steps we can take to address, address those issues. But primarily, what, what we're looking for from commissioners is, is the antennas to the public is what, what does the public want? You know, we've been working with the city over the last several months to establish the idea of calendar parking. We're holding the city, that falls under something like this because that allows whoever's providing service to do a better job of clearing the curb when they're providing winter maintenance. Does this have any impact on the expectations of the condition of the, of the road service within the city? Does that, how does that tie into the county's expectations and, and, and levels for road services throughout the county? You know, this, this is really, it's, it's a lot bigger than just saying we want the city to pay more money on these contracts.
Right.
And we also, the equity component of that is, everybody that lives in the city is already paying county taxes. Why would they be paying more for something that the county is already providing for? This, these are, these are the reasons why I think we have to specifically understand how if we're gonna ask the city to pay for something more than, above and beyond than what they're getting on the county tax bill, we have to have a pretty good reason for understanding why that is. Is there a different service level? Is there a different expectation? Is there, you know, in, in, in all of these settings, everybody in, well, with the exception of the YMCA, I think, that's the only one where people aren't also paying, they're not paying one, if they're paying one or the other, not both, if they're living in the city. But on the cost share on the, on the highway, if, if the city puts in a component that they're gonna pay to the county, the people that are paying that are also paying their share towards the county, general property towards all the accounts. So that's one of the, that's one of the concepts about equity, which is why it's more important to differentiate what different services are required because this service is being provided within the city limits or the extraterritoriality of the city than just generally out there with the county. And one of the reasons why it's important is we have density. Density is the primary distinguishing factor between the greater county and living in cities. We've got fifty or seventy-five or a hundred foot frontage and there's not as much place to pile snow. That's one of the reasons why you have a different expectation. When you can always just lay it and keep piling it back into the, into the ditches, then, then that's, then that's different. Just specifically talking about winter maintenance. So how is it that the population density or the needs of the, of the city are different than anybody that lives outside of those things? And that's the conversation that I think that the city council is looking for is, is planning, is wanting to have with the county board is how are our needs different? And, and what is it that people who live in the city should be paying more for rather than just the things that they're getting because they're residents of the county as well? In a very general, very general way. Related to the, to the road maintenance one, Kristen addressed the fact that the city has a fleet of service vehicles and the county has a fleet of service vehicles. And some of those service vehicles have different capacities or different abilities. And that's along the lines of how our responsibilities have evolved. Yes, we've, they've evolved along the capacity of the operators that we have and the equipment that we need. And so we kind of find that place where we share and we need to hand things off and, and it works. And maybe all that needs to be done is, is that we, we, we work with the city specifically on this one, I think, and update what it is that we have been doing. I mean, with, A, we have to do that. We have to document what we have been doing and what the, what the past practice has been over the last ten years and how that's evolved. We have to clean up the ownership and who's the authority for each of the roads where that is still questioned. And I think there's really only the one. There is the question of whether or not sixty-two West is still a useful designation. Essentially, every, every city street that's not otherwise designated as a county road is identified as sixty-two West, which makes it a county road. And that's kind of the basis for-
The craziest road I've ever seen.
It's basically eighty percent of the map of the city of Grand Canyon. So those things need to be, the, the cost share, I think, is the last component of this to be addressed. And I think that it really has to be balanced out, not just one item at a time, but a bunch of the things come together.
So updating responsibility, authority, cost share, all of that, should we aim for an updating and by the end of August? We're meeting, we're going to do another meeting February and September, right?
And if I, if I, if I'm following Mike's lead in September, they really wanna talk about the values and, and the services and how to differentiate the need for services in the city versus the county. So I would believe that that will be our conversation in September. I think we can be drafting and we'll of course have to work with the city to do this because we can, you know, we- because we can't, you know, we can't just work with the county staff to do this. We'd have to have the city working with their staff to, to write the other half of this, this list of services that we're providing. Maybe, I don't think we can have that by August, but we could have an outline of that also by August. Then the law enforcement contract, I mean, to move on from highway, the law enforcement contract, you know, really what, what is it that the city is asking? What is the sheriff required to provide as far as public safety within the county under statutory responsibility? And I think there are basically three things. They have to investigate felonies and respond to nine eleven calls and operating jails. Basically, the responsibility of the sheriff. What they're not responsible for, but they do because that's become the accepted standard is they're not responsible for patrol. They're not responsible for ordinance enforcement or nuisance abatements. Anything along the misdemeanor line, sheriffs are not statutorily required to respond to that, but they do.
But they, and they can contract for that.
And, and they can contract out for that, which is what they can also do. So therein typically lies the need for, that a city has for more services than the rest of the county. And again, it relates to population density and it relates to the number of activities with the festival events that go in there. But the typical responses the sheriff provides for anybody who lives in or who is visiting or own property within the county generally, what would the city be, would be purchasing and what's our capacity to provide that? And is a contract with our sheriff's office the most appropriate thing or is there a way for them to more efficiently and effectively contract for ordinance enforcement? You know, there's, there's lots of ways to look at that. Short of, it's a really, it's a really odd thing, but one of the most typical nuisance abatements enforcement issues in the state of Minnesota is the lawn mowing, lawn mowing ordinance.
White.
No, the grass, the, the lawn inspector, the weed inspector, the lawn inspector and whether, unless it's otherwise noted, the mayor is the, is the lawn inspector. First thing they usually do when they find that is they, is they pick a vote and they appoint somebody in the office to take care of that so they don't have to do that. But that's, that's the typical, not here because grass just doesn't grow that fast here, but everywhere else in the state when you've got to mow two, three times a week in the high point of summer, that's the biggest nuisance issue.
You know what, Sweden, they have electric lawnmowers, like everywhere went, people's lawns are all being...
Like Roamwest?
Uh huh. Oh, cool.
Anyway, that's, that's the point of the distinction, the differentiation. And from my understanding, the law enforcement contract calls for patrol and it calls for ordinance enforcement. And those are the things above and beyond. If you were to ask the city council on whether or not they thought they were getting, you know, a value for what they're paying for ordinance enforcement, there's a question about that.
Oh.
Because I don't know that our coordination of ordinance enforcement has been really to that level of, you know, what are the cities truly, I don't know if the cities' ordinances are enforceable, I think they're just as old as anything else.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to say, yeah, okay.
Want to say additional enforcement for events? Do we charge the township of Tati for additional law enforcement for their events? Sorry, do you not have to become a district?
Yeah, once a year on the fourth of July.
Right, but it's a consideration.
Right.
There, am I broadening the conversation too much by mentioning that we have a contract for the library? We have a contract for city prosecution? We have contracts related to the EVA with the city in addition to these three agreements that you have put in the outline. And I think that when we, for example, when we talk about law enforcement agreement, prosecution agreement is somewhat related. We, our office is accustomed to working with the sheriff's office. We would, it would cause a greater use of resources if we were supposed to now develop a relationship with some other entity that's enforcing ordinances in the city. So I think, I think they're at least related if you, you don't want to put all of these relationships into one big contract with the city, which I'm not necessarily recommending. I think we at least need to talk about some of these ancillary agreements, especially if the city is going to, and the county are going to want a true representation of how much money is exchanged in hands versus how much value.
And, and public good is a really hard to quantify item, but that's really the outcome that is, that's going to be the measure that's going to determine the value and what each of the parties put into this. So I think on a development, library, support for other public entities that we, that we share, it makes, public good is really the thing that we have to evaluate and it's a really difficult measure.
Well, Molly, can you, can you repeat what you just said about looking at the other agreements as well? I thought we, okay.
Well, I kind of think they should be on our list.
Yeah.
Or...
Well, we, I think we went on, I think we went on the, went on them now just to try to tackle something and the big ones, you know?
So that was intentional?
They had the intent for example, to address the high points and to acknowledge that there are more.
And they are the oldest ones. The library is newer, right?
Well, the library is older than the YMCA contract, for example, but the YMCA contract language has changed because the, the relationship between the county and YMCA has changed.
The law enforcement and, and the city are really old. So those three were enough to tackle.
I apologize, but I've got a truck sitting on my driveway. If I don't go on motor, he's going to drive away.
Oh, oh.
So...
Mike can do that.
And that will record the rest of the conversation. But I think to the, to this extent, I think the direction is first for us to summarize what we're actually doing and note how that's different from the contracts that exist so that we have that as a basis. But I do think that for an August meeting or September meeting with the, with the city council before the next joint powers board, it's going to be this conversation about public good and, and when it's appropriate that the city would pay for something that the county, that people don't already get because they live in the county as well. So when is there a concentrated need in the city that doesn't exist in the greater county?
And Kristen can at least provide us that information.
At least with the highway one, we can do that and I, and we can represent a path to ask him to differentiate how, what he's providing along the lines of this contract. The YMCA one, I think is a lot, is a lot, is a lot simpler and a lot more complicated at the same time.
Right, okay.
So we can then, you can kind of ask a report from Kristen and you could ask the sheriff's alliance.
I don't know, are you going to say something?
Yeah, I guess, I think to sort of summarize that a little bit. It's helpful at least when we dealt with these things that we have to sort of establish some kind of method or strategic process of, you know, and if you said it well, these are the expectations for when you pay county taxes. And there's exceptions, especially with our largest unit of government with, you know, these population lines of anywhere. This Grand Ray is a city and then other entities, so, you know, then what in addition to as far as service and cost that either the city has to pick up or the county has to pick up? Is that sort of...
And likely they're asking the same question as, you know, what do the city contractors expect of, of the real, what would be provided in this one?
Yeah, and so statute to some extent would be important, I think, or not.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that the municipalities are authority to collect the money taxes and what services they need to provide.
I mean, if they're collecting, you know, how do we straighten that out? I don't want to say it was trust or anything like that, but the question comes to my mind. What are they assessing their city residents in their budgets, you know? And then what we're providing in our budget for those residents? Is there any kind of way we could get a, you know, sort of insight into that or isn't that the way to go at all? I'm just trying to look for a process here.
Can you spin it again? What?
Well, let's just say the city is assessing for certain types of services in their budget. And then it would be good to know, are they assessing, you know, obviously they're assessing for their contracts to us. And so are they, are they in sync, you know?
I don't think assessing is the right word, levying?
Leveing, whatever, yeah.
Well, assessing then goes to our assessor office.
I mean, by assess their, their...
Their levying, it's in their budget.
Yeah, budget, yeah. Okay, so they've allocated...
Hundred and forty thousand for law enforcement.
Yeah.
It's in their budget and their property owners pay that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we're, we're providing that. So are we sure about that, you know?
Well, and I think that's part of what we're discussing is are we providing more than that or...
That's...
Yeah, and I've heard from the sheriff before that that amount doesn't cover the cost of two deputies and a squad, which I think is like...
I've got an email from him saying two and a half deputies, three squad cars, jail and dispatch. If you well realize this sum is equal, this hundred and forty is equal to one deputy including that that's in a squad car.
Well, that's a...
Yeah, but that's, but is that...
But the county sheriff also has a general level of, you know, duties to cover the entire county, so it's not necessarily the city community or everything.
And it's the same thing with the highway department. Have we specifically purchased a vehicle to specifically maintain within the city? And we can get some of that information, but then do we use that in other areas of the county and how does that level change? And have we bought equipment to specifically maintain other areas of the county?
So what I'm getting at is, you know, they, they're, let's just say law enforcement, they're, they're budgeting a hundred and forty thousand dollars. If we figure out what we should be providing through general law enforcement countywide and we get a percat thing or whatever it is, and then we look at what the needs are of the city, you know, in providing that service above and beyond, what the, what we would expect for the county, then that would be what we would look at as far as our expectations for their responsibility. That's what we're getting.
I think that's the question I was asking.
Yeah.
And we need to have that data.
Will you want a copy of their budget assumption?
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm looking, I'm asking you a question, I guess. Let's just figure out how much it costs us to provide law enforcement by some method to everyone and what are the greater needs for Grand Ray? And then that would be sort of what we would seek from the city.
I think that's how we should prioritize the needs of the first, decide how much we're spending currently and does that fit what our responsibilities should be.
So you live in the city and you were taxed here. Well, give you a tax statement and see how much goes for what.
Well, I guess I have, whatever, my portion is a hundred and forty thousand dollars is what I'm paying the city.
Do you live in town?
I think taxes in town.
But, but, you know, and, but I didn't really personally care about that. I think what I do as a city resident, and I'm also a seasonal resident part of the time, you know, I, I think there's various expectations for the city than there is if you live off the grid.
Well, you expect sidewalk.
Forty miles in town, yeah, I mean, I don't expect patrols, you know, and that kind of...
My citizens do.
But, I mean, I don't, and, and expectations with that because it'd be tremendously expensive for the county to provide these services commensurate to location rather than to population density. And plus activity. But I, I'm trying to figure out a way to get to what is...
I, I mean, I think you reach out to the department, that's at least department, and say, what are your general operations?
That's what I would like to have.
What do you do in your...
And, and what is, I hate to say, but what's reasonable, what's justifiable, what is fair? And then we have an idea of how we can shape policy in that regard. The highway one is, seems to me, quite simple. You just have to decide what you're going to provide and what's a fair way to do it and include the streets and services.
Right, because the city's looking at a pedestrian plan that includes clearing sidewalks. That's going to have the impact of some level.
Sure.
Law enforcement agreement's pretty detailed, actually. It says we'll provide fifty-eight hundred and twenty-four hours of daily patrol service.
This is what we're doing.
This is what the agreement says.
I agree.
So that's the two deputies, two full-time deputies?
Two and a, yeah, two and a half.
What was that?
Fifty-eight hundred and twenty-four hours of daily patrol services.
But they're not paying for two and a half deputies, they're still paying for...
One.
Well, it's probably was at the time. Are we actually, you know, that I don't know if we're actually, is there somebody on these streets fifty-eight hundred and twenty-four hours?
No, I'm talking about how we, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm...
On the streets, yeah, yeah. So are we currently, we're, are we currently providing two and a half?
Yes.
Okay.
We have additional staff specifically to meet those contractor requirements.
Now, okay, so, but is one of those, you know, what we ordinarily provide or is that one and a half?
We have hired additional to meet the contractor requirements.
So we have two and a half staff members allocated to the season.
But that's seasonal, you're talking about the seasonal?
No, I think it's annual.
Because we have a seasonal...
We have seasonal deputies due to the increased populations in the city of the entire county, for the entire county.
Not just the city?
They also cover the city.
They don't go around with the city to avoid them?
No, the reason for the summer deputies is because of the increased level of community members in the summer. I don't think that we assess the city differently for the level of citizens in the summer versus the winter.
It would be good to have the sheriff clarify these things.
Okay, so let's do that for August.
I'll, I'll send an email to Jeff letting him know that that's what the commissioners are requesting.
Okay, okay, we're busy August. Do anyway, but just different topics. Okay. So in your package, we also received... So in your package, we also receive monthly at our committee meeting, just to report from personnel in public safety and transportation. So that we keep up with all that too. Anything else?
If you want to talk about the Y one, I'll just let that go.
Not for now. I think these two are probably the handle. Because that's, that, there's a lot more to that.
What, I'm, what, uh... Who is the...
Where are you?
Where am I?
You are in the commissioner's room.
Thank you.
Um, if, I mean, it might be, it might be useful to, if we have any broad comments about the Y agreement or what, I mean, aren't we trying to get all three of these, you know, knocked out or, I mean, there's...
We are.
We're requesting info for both of the other two. Is there some info we need to help us further the discussion along the Y contract or what?
I got a suggestion, and it's a question from Molly. You had worked on whose responsibility is it chart? And I think that, at least, I know that we've been wanting to discuss that in facilities, but we really, I don't think adequately have done it. But then, but then maybe it's not necessary. But my question to you, would that be helpful for us if, when we look at this? So maybe that's, maybe that's where we could get a better idea. I think Molly did a great job from the legal perspective of, you know, looking at the agreements with the Y in regards to who, who should do what and whose responsibility. Could you comment on that?
Sure, um, what Commissioner Breschon has just, you know, is a table that I created that does, where I took the contracts between the county, the Y M C A and the school and said, "Here's how we have contracted for the day-to-day responsibilities." And kind of in plain language that here's what the school needs to do under the contract, it's what the county does, and here was, here's what the Y M C A does. That was more about what kind of work are we doing, like who shovels the sidewalk and when? And, you know, who cleans the locker rooms and that kind of thing. Um, if, if you want me to bring that out as part of the contract discussion, I can. Or are, is what you're talking about to create a similar document between of what the city and county responsibilities are for Y? I think that would be a one liner because it's really just a financial relationship.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, is what the scope is of our responsibilities at county? And then try to use that in determining what, what, what approach we would take to the city assessment. Is it adequate, fair? Because they have a unique situation as well where they, then the next step is what does the city pay? I am assuming that they're assessing, or we are assessing, um, property taxes we're collecting from the city just for the hundred and ten plus the ten thousand dollars for capital. That's, that's, and so that's what the city residents are paying. And then county residents excluding the city are paying another assessment.
Levy.
Yeah, levy, yeah.
I call them assessments.
I don't want phone calls.
It's a, well, it's a, it's based on levy, but we assess that in our levy.
Right, so they're excluded from the hundred, the hundred thousand.
And I'm just trying to get... But maybe I'm just chasing something.
Yeah, I don't know that we're, we're going with this. If you compare it to the, to the city, to the library agreement, um, that's a flat fifty. Where this one stops at a hundred and the county takes the rest of these or whatever.
And it's similar to the agreement we had with the city when they had the pool. I mean, their costs were much more than what we actually contributed. And that's why we did it this way, because we wanted to be fair in the previous contract.
Yeah, that one should have adjusted.
Should have been adjusted a lot.
And then the other issue to look at then is what the costs are. Because the costs are greater than we ever anticipated.
And the costs to the city for their pool were greater than they anticipated and they took that responsibility on. And that is the reason for why we are capped at a hundred.
Because they were capped at a hundred.
Well, we, seventy-five, I thought, was the last payment that we made to the city for the pool. Which, speaking of agreements in that old pool, it says section two under the county, it still says pay fifty percent to demolish and remove the swimming pool. Do we still need to have that?
In the, in the Y M C A, is that what?
Mm-hmm. That's still under there? And the cost to settle the case with Burbank Aquatics is still in there?
Yeah, we may have kept it in there just to kind of document the history.
Yeah, we haven't touched this, so that was just the original document.
Yep, just looking at old language. And that was a gentleman's agreement between us and the Y. They did not increase our contribution to the pool as it increased for them. So we agreed with the Y that we would take that responsibility.
This one's, in some ways tougher to evaluate, we asked two benefits. No, allowing law enforcement services are pretty clear, I think, to most people.
So was highway department.
But, yeah. This, who, who benefits from the Y M C A, the location of it? How many people actually use it? That's, that was part of the evaluation when the pool was down, downtown in the city. They used to keep very close track and would use it so that they could come up with statistics. This many residents use it, this many people from the park use it, this many people from outside of the city use it, and things like that.
And I don't think that we can do that with a Y. I mean, that was a pool. And you used the pool, but with a Y, it's a public service. I mean, there is daycare operated out of there that takes impact off of our public health and human services. There is...
Programs for seniors.
Program, I mean, there's a whole other level of benefit to the county and services that the county provides that are now kind of alleviated by the services of the Y. And so how do you quantify that?
That's a, that's just, it's a different animal, it's very complex.
Yeah, it's a whole different ball of wax.
I agree with you. And I, I, I guess what I was trying to get at is some way of getting better information about is the hundred thousand equitable?
Commissioner, do you think it would be helpful to get numbers from the Y M C A as to what their membership makeup is? Who, who makes part of their...
We took a look at that, Hannah and I, and she looked at it. But the only way we could get it so far, unless maybe the county provides information, was by zip code.
So, so how many?
That doesn't work because...
Oh, it doesn't? Because all the way up there.
Yeah, unorganized territories, five, five, six, four.
So that's where it's going, is that, so that was, so that could be done by, by address of city limits and get that off of the county assessor. Or we had that data. That would be more helpful. I know that at one time we talked, I know we talked about five, five years ago about, you know, what, what this assessment could be. And we figured out cost for household and a property payer in Grand Ray versus the county. And we found out that, I think in the beginning, weren't we double assessing the city?
The...
But then we decided to...
In our, while it was, we were part of writing the agreement out, so, no, we didn't catch that. And it, and it was, and we had to take that portion out of it. There's, so we didn't do that. But neither did we add the cost limit increase that this thing may have started to either, either way. One was positive, one was negative, but...
It all worked out.
But I think that would be good. My only question is, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I, I do know with my involvement in the Y that the costs are far more than we ever thought they were. And we had that federal document under, under the budget. So, but that could be a budgeting issue as well. But it's just, there's just so many problems there with the maintenance that soon as things don't work, they break down.
So then instead of asking the city to cover that, why aren't we asking Y M C A Duluth to cover that?
Because that's not the agreement.
Not currently. It's a question that I'm asking.
Yeah, no, that's another issue. But that's not the issue we're looking at right now.
Right.
Unless you're saying we should just not look at this and you want to try to negotiate with the Y.
We can, we can look at it, we can ask the question. I'm just telling you what the history is and why we are where we are. I'm not saying we shouldn't ask the question.
So how should we go forward?
I'm wondering, what you're asking really is for data. You would like to have more data on this?
I think so, yeah. But, you know, Commissioner DuKurt now, I think, suggested that, that instead of doing this, we should negotiate with Duluth there or Y M C A.
I didn't say instead. I'm just saying if we're asking who's responsible for what or who should pay for what or what should be covered, they should be part of the conversation since they're part of the contract.
Our contract doesn't say that, that they are, or the contract is that the county...
The Y M C A does not have a contract with the city?
Yeah, and this, what we're looking at, I thought, was just the joint powers between the county and the city.
Yes, yes.
And those, those costs there. I think probably the first step is just to go through this contract and be like, "Oh, yeah, this isn't relevant anymore." Or just be, it's a new contract.
And compare it to the budget? I mean, Jeff has those number. I've seen a report that I think he might have brought forward in the board meeting about the actual cost to the county of the Y M C A. If you're asking the city to contribute in a different way, that is relevant. Being part of the data is that thing.
That's what I'm trying to...
Yeah, okay. I'm pretty sure Jeff has run that report and created that.
I've...
Okay, yeah.
We, we talked about it in the building committee meeting last Friday as well.
So Brady, you can get that?
Yeah.
Okay, so Brady will get that, will add it to this. And in August, maybe we can do the two things we talked about, law enforcement and highway, and then address this with the benefit you have. And look over the contract to see how that applies.
It's good.
Um, and I sent a email to Jeff asking him to send out a request to Kristen.
Okay.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you. All righty. What, we're making progress though.
Yeah.
Anything else? Before we adjourn, otherwise, we adjourn. Thank you all for your input, attendance, comments, and moving forward.
Does it spin after I do it?
Uh, it's just, yeah, it kind of like turns around.